Good morning and welcome to the Special Strategy and Resources Policy Committee today at 11:30. My name's councillor Terry Fox, I'm the leader and chair of this committee. Before we start proceedings, can I ask that we stand for a minute's silence for Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. Thank you, everyone. The meeting today is open to the public, we've received no questions on the matter to be discussed from the members of the public. Therefore, can I ask members to request that their mobile telephones and other such equipment is turned either off or to silence so we don't disturb the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today, if there is, the emergency evacuation will be to take instruction from Tamral staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. Can I just ask members to introduce themselves as we go around and then I'll ask the officers as well to introduce themselves, so starting with Richard.
Thank you Chair, Richard Williams, Member for Stent.
Thank you, Shafak Mohammed Eklso-Ward. Brian.
Councillor Brian Lodge-Birdley-Ward.
Mick.
Councillor McRooney, Member for Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you Mick, Paul.
Good morning, my name is councillor Paul Wood and I am one of the councillors elected to represent the Woodhouse Ward.
Thanks Paul. Good morning Ashman Ali, Executive Director of Operational Services. Ryan.
Thanks Chair, my name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
David.
David Hollis, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
And Craig.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Thank you, and I'll ask Tom to introduce himself when we get to the report. Can we have apologies for absence?
Yes Chair, I've got apologies for absence from Angela Argenzio, Julie Grocott, Martin Smith, Douglas Johnson and Joe Otten.
Thank you, and I understand councillor Otten's got another meeting on this morning. Can we, is there any exclusion of the press, public and press?
None Chair.
Thank you, any declarations of interest? If there's none, thank you, as I said, there was no public questions received, so straight over to the reports. Should we take them both together, 6A and 6B if that's okay? Tom, can you introduce yourself and we'll go to them reports?
Thank you Chair, so I'm Tom Smith, I'm the Director of Direct Services. I have the Facilities Management Service within my area of responsibility and the procurement and monitoring of usage of the energy sits within Facilities Management, so that's why I'm here presenting the report. So, usefully Chair, actually I think taking both reports at the same time because they clearly interlink with one another, but from a governance perspective, we just wanted to make sure we're very clear in terms of separation between gas and electric because they are slightly different decisions. Firstly, apologies for having to bring this into Emergency Committee. We initially thought this would be an officer decision as it's a commonly recurring item in terms of energy procurement generally, but on advice informed it needs to come to the committee largely because of the potential financial implications based on our projections and the current market volatility in terms of energy. What I would say right up front is the projections within this report are projections and frankly, you'd be a better person than me if you could work out what's going to happen with the energy market going forwards. So, the decision today is twofold. The first part of it is to sign up to a framework contract and to harmonise the dates associated with our gas and our electricity contracts. At the moment, they run on different dates because of the way the procurements were done and we're keen to get them on the same footing from a dates perspective because as we know, going forward especially, these two things in terms of electric and gas are going to be linked with one another very clearly in terms of our future strategy around buildings and everything else. And then the second part is to get the committee's agreement to the strategy around the procurement, which is based on what we call baskets and based on how we buy energy through that framework in an ongoing fashion into the future. So, in terms of that first part, the contracts that are currently in place, we currently have a three-year contract in place for our electricity through a framework contract and that currently runs to the 31st of March 2026. And we have, sorry, currently we have three year in place, let me start again, every day's wrong. So the proposals are that we put a new three-year contract in place for electricity, which will run us from the 1st of April 2023 to the 31st of March 2026. And the second part is that we will extend the existing gas framework contract to the 31st of March 2026. So again, it will harmonise the dates, so effectively our gas and our electric will both be on framework contracts, both of which end at the 31st of March 2026. That brings both of those contracts together, what it also allows us to do is to implement what we feel is a lower risk strategy in terms of how we are buying energy going forwards. The preference in terms of that strategy going forwards is that we move all of our contracts on to what we call a V30 strategy, a V30 basket rather, and that means we're buying our energy 30 months in advance of currently. Now, you might say, well, okay, market volatility and everything, would we not be better doing something shorter term in terms of this? The reality though is the V30 basket gives the council, it does two things really, it gives the council certainty in terms of what we're spending because we get a much flatter price and as I say, it evens out the ups and downs in the market because we're buying it over that extended period. If you buy it over the short term, the risk is that effectively you will see big, big hikes in price should the market go completely crazy again. And all the information we're currently getting is the market is not going to come down necessarily in the short term. So we currently believe that that's the right strategy to use. What that means though is that to move both everything to that V30 strategy, we have to take some decisions now because we have to buy into that V30 strategy 30 months ahead of us wanting to start it. So, in terms of this decision today, it is a bit of a complex report this and in terms of some of the dates, it gets a little bit complicated. But in order to move ourselves to that V30 position, we will make a decision following committee today, if the committee agree with the proposal, to sign up for our current L6 basket for 2324, which is a six months in advance basket, an L12 basket for 2425 because that gives us more certainty because that's the 12 months ahead, and a V30 basket from 2526 going forwards because that's the earliest point at which we can enter that V30 basket of energy. So what we're asking for today is agreement to that strategy effectively that will, from today, give us a strategy for the purchase of our energy from 2526 onwards to move both gas and electric to the V30 position. Gas is already on that V30 basket, it's just electric that is affected in terms of that change. It is kind of worth, as I say, in terms of that V30 strategy, just noting that it is the recommendation in terms of generally our risk profile as a local authority and our budget process and it is also what the central government civil service position in terms of the procurement of energy as well within government as well and their recommended strategy as well. So, I think that's probably what I was going to say in a nutshell, clearly there's lots of detail here though, I'm happy to take some questions if that would be useful.
Thanks Tom, Mick?
Yeah, thanks, I've got a number of questions, some of them are about this and some are slightly, you know, not quite related to it. Just to start with, is the purpose of it to guarantee supply or get us the best price or is it both really? That's one. Where are we with the cap in terms of our supply? I know measures have been announced for domestic supply, but I'm not quite sure where we are with ours. Is it, where are we with the domestic waste to electricity situation, you know, where are we with that? I'm a little puzzled by that. Is it possible or would it make any sense whatsoever to offer this out to, say, our council tenants? I don't know whether that's a really stupid question or whatever, but it's just a thought. And the other one is to anybody that can explain to me, what is the purpose of OFGEM these days? Because I thought it was set up to at least attempt to protect the customer from the excesses of the marketplace. All it seems to do at the moment is say, yes, we'll raise the cap, yes, we'll raise the cap. Hint of sarcasm there Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mick, Tom?
Okay, so the purpose of this decision is mainly around us trying to get the best price by actually the lowest risk price to the council, the lowest risk procurement strategy. I don't think anyone can kind of, you know, can predict the future in terms of energy at the moment, but what we can do is propose the least, the lowest risk in terms of the council and the strategy that allows us to best plan our budget going forward. And that's what this is about. A framework contract to some extent helps with the guarantee of supply because actually what you've got is a number of different suppliers within that framework contract and some protections within it. But the main thing here is about the procurement strategy and is making sure it's as low risk as it possibly can be for the council and its financial planning going forwards. In terms of the cap, we understand there is a business cap in place, but that's only to March. So effectively this report, because this report is about buying our energy from the 1st of April onwards, who knows what will happen from then frankly, so again, it's about least risk this report based on what we currently know. In terms of domestic waste to energy situation, in terms of the oil plant, the energy we buy doesn't come from that plant, the plant feeds the national grid, so it's in the market. So we don't buy unit costs from the oil directly, that's why we're on a framework contract through a supplier, which will be EDF based on this decision going forward. In terms of the offer to council tenants, this is very much a procurement around council buildings and, you know, our own assets. So unfortunately, it's not something I don't think we could do in terms of offering to council tenants. And then I will pass on the question about OFGEM.
Thanks, Shafak.
Morning Tom, I'm looking at either page 14 or 614, so I don't know which one it is, it's in the financial. So 4.21, but then the paragraphs aren't numbered, so it's this area Tom? So it talks about V30 requires a 30-month commitment. Brackets, SEC would need to provide 30 months' notice to exit the basket. And then you talked about the others being 12 and 24. So just to get my head right in this, are you suggesting that we get into this but then almost immediately serve a notice that we're going to leave in 2026 because we want to marry up both the gas and electric? Because it's quite technical this report, a lot of stuff like CCS framework, brackets, RM 6011, seriously mean not a lot for anyone, including us I think in here.
I totally appreciate that councillor, this is an incredibly technical report and I'm kind of doing my best to simplify down as much I can, but those two decisions are slightly separate in some respects. So we're making a decision to normalise both of our framework contracts on the same timescale. So that's one decision, so basically we will put gas and electric both on to the same Crown Commercial Services timescale framework contract and that will end at the end of March 2026. So this decision will give us one framework contract for gas and electric with the same timescales. Aside from that, within that framework contract, the council has to decide how it buys its energy and which baskets it uses in terms of the cost and price we get per kilowatt hour for gas and electric. And gas is already on the V30 long-term basket, that's proved to be, you know, a good basket in terms of mitigating risk for the council. Electricity is currently not on that, electricity is currently on the V6, well, the L6 basket, so it's a mix of fixed and variable. And our strategy is to move that on to the V30 basket in the end. You can't immediately move on to the V30 basket, in the same way you have to give notice to come out of it, you have to give civic significant notice to go into it. So what we are doing through this strategy is basically saying, okay, today, we will normalise those two framework contracts, give ourselves the fact that we've got a contract in place and a framework contract in place, but over a three-year period, we'll move the council's electricity basket to V30 through two, three different parts. We'll sign up today effectively to that six-month one again that we're already on. We will give notice that we want to sign up to the 12-month one because we have to do that in advance. And we will also give notice that we want to sign up to the 30-month one. So we have to make all those decisions at the same time in order to get the strategy in place which gives us a six-month buying strategy, followed by a 12-month buying strategy, followed by a 30-month buying strategy. But we have to make all those decisions now because of the leading times in terms of us entering those baskets for energy.
And the consequences of potentially the decision today will be that in 2026, we'll be looking at 30 months for continuity really?
Yeah, yeah, so what it gives us is, what it means is come 2026, we will have that lower risk strategy in terms of our purchasing around electric and it will mean, we should, when it comes to peaks and troughs, this strategy should mean that we get a much evener, a more even price for our electricity and a better way of doing our financial planning going forward rather than the volatility that we see in that shorter term purchasing strategy.
I mean, at the moment, obviously, energy prices in the last decade have been subject to world events, if I can put it that way. Fukushima being one, you know, that had a knock-on effect on the nuclear industry particularly in, say, for the likes of Germany, but you know, we're in a world market and obviously at the moment, the war in Ukraine is definitely affecting, the war itself is affecting food prices, but also what a major gas supplier, Russia, is doing to the world. So, if a citizen of Sheffield was watching in, a genuine question would be, what safeguards will we have for world events? Not only for price increases but price decreases, because if we lock ourselves in till 2026, what if one hopes, peace emerges, Russia's defeated, new president of Russia because Putin's deposed, has a better relationship with the West, gas etcetera, aren't we going to be stuck? What safeguards are in this that says if something happens major like that, that we're not stuck paying a higher premium?
I think that...
Any break clauses?
Yeah, sure, well, I mean, in terms of break clauses, I don't think there's anything that would, you know, would say, well, if the price goes down substantially, then we'll be able to kind of remove ourselves from the arrangement. I think it's challenging because what we're trying to do here is a balance of risk, you know, against that volatility in the market that we're currently in. I think what, you know, my understanding is over that 30-month period is that you do, you know, we will benefit from if the price falls, but we may not see, you know, if the price fell a huge amount, you know, if it just tumbled straight off a cliff, then there may be, you know, that might not immediately be passed to the council through that 30-month arrangement. But ultimately, over that 30-month arrangement, if prices drop, it will come down. It just flattens the peaks and troughs because of the purchasing strategy and the way it works. Because you're buying so far out, it basically takes all the, what it should do is take all the movement out of the market. And our assessment is what that means is A, it means if it goes up again, you have a bit of protection from that and B, it means that we have a stable basis on which to do our financial planning around energy pricing. You know, I said right from the outset on this, the biggest issue we've got at this minute is actually every figure that's in this report is a projected figure based on what we currently know about energy pricing. And as they will always say within, you know, the kind of investment markets, you know, things can go up as well as down. And our assessment at the minute is this is the lowest risk strategy for the council in terms of its financial management.
Final question Chair, at the back I think somewhere, there's a number of options. I think there's four in there, four different scenarios you could, can I just ask a question around whether you've got any intelligence on what other local authorities are doing? Is anyone doing anything different to what we're doing? Because this seems the more sensible approach, but there are some more radical approaches. You know, to procure through an energy broker for example is one option, you know.
Yeah.
Or option four.
Yeah, so I don't have that to hand in terms of other local authorities. I think, you know, my understanding is that, you know, a large proportion of local authorities have gone down the framework route because it gives you that, you know, genuinely gives you that certainty in terms of things going forward. I think the other bit that is worth just saying around the framework option is that we get some benefit just from being in the framework. That means that we don't have to have, you know, a degree of resource within the council. So if we went down our own, you know, we went in with another local authority, we tried ourselves to, you know, go directly to the market or even potentially go through a broker, we wouldn't necessarily get the level of advice that we get through the framework. We get, you know, kind of a whole range of sort of advice around where the market's going and other things, which has influenced obviously our decisions in terms of this procurement strategy. So we get some benefit from the framework that we wouldn't necessarily get if we were outside the framework as well. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Shafak, the number of hands went up there. Got Brian, Paul and then Mick.
Yeah, Brian, thanks. We're in this, I suppose, I don't know whether this comes to Ryan really, but as we're now looking at the budget process and looking for next year and this will have an impact, are we making assumptions based on this contract for energy costs across services in next year's budget assumptions or is it, can we do it from that is I suppose is the question? To give us a bit of stability on what we're projecting?
So, the short answer is yes, but it's the changes that we've seen in the energy price assumptions for next year, which are reflected in this report, are one of the reasons why some of the budget targets have moved as we've gone through the budget process. So the current budget that we're trying to work to does assume that this decision is approved and that the assumptions that are in here hold.
And the other question then Chair, it talks about such as schools and things like that and other services with the council. What about sort of partner organisations, so Sheffield City Trust, are they part of this strategy? Do we supply to them through this or are they alone from that and they're doing their own?
I'm pretty sure they're separate from us on this. But they are also seeing the same sort of pressures for the same sort of reasons.
Could they, could they become part of this if it's, because I'm looking, you know, obviously they're wet facilities, the cost of swimming pools is extortionate in energy costs and things like that. If there's an opportunity for them, could this be something that they could be included? Because you say you can add in and take outside, are we able to do that or is that a trading account that we have then in effect?
I don't know whether we're allowed to do that, but that's something we can certainly look at.
If it helps in their energy costs and, you know, the support through council and things like that, then I just think it may be something that's worth investigating and looking at, thanks Chair.
Thanks Brian, can I just come back to that, just take Chair prerogative and then I'll come to Paul. So just for clarification then, so the table on page 16 is the electricity prices and the paragraph above it speaks about what we've got, the projected cost of the electricity for three years. But then we bill the schools etcetera. So I think building on to back of what Brian was saying is, this is, the knock-on effect is that we will take it on but other parts of the organisation through the budget process, their budget will increase or be squeezed depending on that. And to underline that, I think the startling effect to me is street lighting within a year has gone from £2 million to £9 million. And I mean, if that's just street lighting, what's that across the piece? Oh, that just makes sense then.
That's absolutely right, so the consequences of significant increases in energy prices have knock-on effects for schools, for the housing revenue account and for the general fund as well. It's felt across the board, so some really difficult challenges that schools are going to face dealing with that. You know, what is a doubling of cost from one year to the next year?
Thanks, thanks Ryan, Paul and then Mick?
The council's current policy on renewables purchases of power has big implications on the future budgeting of the council amounting to over one and a half million over the life of the props contract. I trust this decision will come back to committee and not be an officer delegated decision.
Tom?
Yeah, absolutely, that's the point, is to bring that back to committee. We absolutely acknowledge that that's a decision that needs to come, given both its financial implications and its implications for our, you know, our net zero strategy.
Thanks Tom, Mick?
Thanks Chair, it's just a question that Shafak sort of provoked when he talked about, do we have any information about what other local authorities are doing? And I'm just thinking, is there any benefit whatsoever of, say, for example, just because they're our neighbours, Rotherham, Doncaster, Barnsley and ourselves sort of coming together and adopting the same principles in terms of our purchasing? Would we get any financial benefit or stability from buying in bulk as it were? No? Yes? No?
I think that's exactly the point of joining a framework councillor Rooney, is to get that benefit of buying in bulk and the Crown Commercial Services framework we're talking about is a national framework, not just a South Yorkshire one. We have used the Yorkshire Purchasing Organisation, the YPO frameworks in the past, which fundamentally are what you're talking about. It's about councils locally clubbing together. But the work we've done leads us to believe that the national framework, the Crown Commercial Services one, is actually better for us than that local one.
I've got Richard and Brian.
Thank you Chair, you mentioned earlier that should the prices fall, we can get out of this contract. Does that action come with penalty costs?
So it wouldn't be about coming out of the contract if prices fell? What I said earlier was that what this contract should do is smooth any transition in terms of pricing. So we would be tied into this contract, you see from some of the notice periods that this strategy does tie us in for, you know, a relatively long period within the framework contract, the framework contract runs to the end of 2026. But what this does is it sort of protects us against the big increases, but it does mean that we wouldn't necessarily see any big drops as fast as we would if we took a shorter term strategy. As I say, our assessment in terms of the financial planning for the authority and the certainty around our financial planning is it's better in a sense to have a lower risk, flatter profile in terms of changes in energy costs than to be constantly seeing this up and down and up and down, which, you know, presents risks for the council if the price goes up significantly and also just makes it very difficult to plan ahead.
Yeah, if I may come back, yeah, I really understand what you're trying to do, that's not a problem. But if in a scenario, and nobody really knows where the energies prices are going to go... But if in a scenario, and nobody really knows where the energies prices are going to go, either up or down, but if in a scenario that the prices did drop dramatically and were stable at a lower price, could we get out of the long term contract? And if so, would there be penalty charges as far as you're aware?
As far as I'm aware, this strategy ties us in to buy electric thirty months in advance. Clearly we've got notice periods, so if prices fell away really significantly after the decision we took today, we could make a decision to give notice to come out of that strategy in the future. But obviously the longer term the strategy is, the more notice we have to give to come out of it. There isn't a kind of a break clause that says we can get out of a thirty month advanced buying thing if the price, you know, completely falls through the floor in that way.
Thanks, Richard. Bray?
I think it's following on from councillor Williams there. I mean, we don't know what the government's doing, we know what the government has said for six months for commercial entities and like local authorities. But we don't know and is there a risk that we're doing that? I know we've got to do, we've got to make a decision because of the supply coming up and the current contract changing. But where's that leave us if we don't know what the government's looking to do here? But I've seen in the report, it says that government departments have to use the CCS. So I suppose if there's things, can they change things if the government change? So, you know, if they suddenly make an intervention, where's that leave us? Are we then stuck in that situation where it's in there? It's one question. The other question, I just, it's following on from my earlier question, and I know if councillor Mead was still around, he'd be banging on about an ESCO, an energy supply company. And that question I was asking for such as SCT, is that conscious of the issues that Nottingham had with Robin Hood Energy, we don't want to go around there. But if there was the opportunity, because everything's facing this, so partner organisations, where would that fit in if, it would probably be outside of this, I presume it would be a separate entity in there? Thanks, Chair.
Okay, so to take the second question first, I think anybody wanting to get into the energy supply business at the minute is running some risks unless you're an extractor, in which case you're all right. Yeah, I mean, completely different set of circumstances for Nottingham City Council, they were supplying domestic energy from the wholesale market and effectively taking on the role of an energy supplier. Like I said, we will have a look to see whether there's any advantage or whether it's even possible for us to work with Sheffield City Trust on something like this and see where that takes us. From memory, the sort of cost increases that Sheffield City Trust are forecasting are of a similar percentage to the ones that we're talking about, so they're doing something similar to us. The government haven't announced what they're going to do to support businesses, public sector and so on. And at the minute, I think that's probably because, I'm listening to somebody on the radio who used to work in the part of the treasury that relates to this yesterday. The business community is like local government, it's an incredibly diverse community. You've got, you know, very high intensity users of energy, some of the steelworks down towards east end of Sheffield, for example, will have one completely different type of energy contract to the post office around the corner here. How do you come up with a scheme that helps those businesses and works it out and we fall somewhere in between that? All of these organisations, particularly those with high usage, have long term contracts in place of one sort or another. Some have their own energy procurement teams who effectively act as energy brokers. Again, how does the government provide financial support to those businesses to help them through in a way that recognises the enormous diversity of the relationships that businesses and local government have with the energy market? And that's the very difficult thing that government are trying to wrestle with at the minute, how they actually implement the policy. I have no idea how they're going to do that, to be quite honest. So we'll just have to wait and see. I think the fact that we're talking about here moving on to effectively the government's energy supply contract for both our energy sources probably makes it a little bit easier for the government to help us in some respects because they're doing it the same for all government services and departments. And at least they understand how that particular type of energy supply contract works. The variety is enormous though and I'm not sure how they're going to do it yet. I think there's talk of announcements next week with implementation effective the first of October, but perhaps not until November. And I can see them really struggling to work out how to provide that support.
Thanks. If there's no more, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a quick question and I apologise if it's in the report. Is this an exclusive supply agreement or could we go to other suppliers as well?
So it's a framework contract, so, but the preferred supplier is through EDF at the moment because that's what the sort of the framework is advising. So we have, as I say, through the framework, we get advice on the best, you know, the best company to go with, so that's currently EDF. You know, there will be a range of suppliers within the framework, but that's the current, you know, the current advised one.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't make myself quite clear. The agreement with the framework, that will be exclusive, so we have to buy all our energy through the framework, we can't cherry pick.
No, that's right, yeah. Our contract for all of our energy for the council would be via the Crown Commercial Services framework agreement, yeah.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll take you to the recommendations on the item six A. Can we agree those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you. To the report, agenda item six B, recommendations on that, can we agree those? Agreed, thank you. We've got the issue regarding the next meeting of the Strategy Resources, which is on Wednesday the 12th of October twenty twenty two at two PM, unless, unless you get another call. But no, hopefully it'll be nailed on for the 12th of October. Thank you very much for your attendance today, thank you.